Thank you, everyone. We are now 50th in the city council candidates. Before I start, two things or maybe three. We have some folks in the audience who didn't get recognized. Scott Bitney, Assistant City Manager, and now Chief. Thank you, everyone. From Oxnard School District, Board of Trustees, Deborah Cordez. Now to the substance of the process. For instance, on the process, I've been asked by the audience to make sure that you're answering questions. And we've got three mics. Speak clearly. Make sure you've got a mic and your speaker language a mic because these things will pick you up only if you're speaking right into it. So we'll make sure we take care of that. Let me run through the instructions one more time. You've got the drill here. It's one minute each. It goes quickly. Nancy back there, who is extremely punctual and well timed. She'll give you the yellow flag paper at 45 seconds. You have 15 seconds left. Red, you're done, and I will sort of talk over you at the thank you at that point. We're going to start with an opening statement from each of you. Then we will have five questions that you'll each have one minute on, and then we will do the closing statements. And if I get occasionally a pause to figure out where I'm at in the lineup here, bear with me and we'll take care of that. So let's get started so we get moving. I'm going to start alphabetically with Mr. Albaizy. One minute, your opening statement, please.
Hi, my name is David Albaizy. I'm wanting to be the next city council member of the city of Oxnard. I'm a longtime resident of the city, business owner, entrepreneur, and I have opened and operated several businesses in the city and are supported by tons and tons of local small businesses that you guys are actually the cause of why they're here today. So that's why I thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Dale Chavez. Born and raised in the city of Oxnard. I'm running for city council because I believe that I can work with our organizations and our communities, our residents, our employees, to try to rebuild and maintain trust, unity, and mutual respect. You know, I live in South Oxnard, which is an area that needs development, and we need your guys' support. We need to bring your businesses into South Oxnard to support our residents, and to do that is to build a better relationship with all businesses current and new businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dozier.
Good morning. Thank you for inviting us. My name is Orlando Dozier. I'm a program analyst. I work at Port Monique. I'm also a planning commissioner. I'm running for city council for Oxnard because I believe that I basically want to help my community, and that's something that was instilled in me in 20 years of the military. And if you want to hear a little bit more about that, I'd be happy to elaborate on it. I just wanted to say that a great city, I think, is built on three pillars. Those pillars are the residents, the city hall, and the business community. So I'm looking forward to speaking to one of the three important pillars today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huber. Common sense is not common in Oxnard. I'm running because I have the experience, skills, and abilities to return rational, professional thought to city hall. I served honorably in the Navy for 20 years as a captain. I was commander of the destroyer, commander of the naval surface worker center, where I had 2,000 people and $600 million budget. I'm a small business owner who helps good companies get better. I'm on the planning commission as the chair, and in my neighborhood watch as a member. And I'm on a number of community boards that is bringing good relationships and helping Oxnard. There's three things that I'm running for and running on. My platform's a leadership. We need to make sure that we have a vision, purpose, and motivation for the citizens to drive. Financial responsibility. We need to have a leader who has the big picture and understands the relationship between budgets, people, infrastructure, and programs, applying the trust. We need to return transparency to the dice. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. McCallum.
Thank you. Good morning. I've been honored to be your council member for eight years now, and I'm asking for another term. I like to think that I did bring common sense to the dice. I'm looking to continue on with that. I have three elements of my campaign: public safety, economic gardening, which is a strategy for economic development, and trust in city hall. When I say trust in city hall, then you know as taxpayers, ratepayers, or whatever, that we're using your money wisely, judiciously, and we're not being frivolous. And I think that we really need to focus on getting our house in order before we go back to the anyone ask for an increase in our pay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, hello. My name is Enrique Patriz. I am running for the Oxford City Council because I truly believe that the city council and the mayor either do not have a clear vision of where they want to move the city or else they really do not know what they are doing. The mayor and the city council, they keep bringing up the idea that everything is good, that we're doing this, we're doing the recruitment, we're doing that. The thing is, that is not true. We still have a lot of hot roads in the city. We still have a lot of dirt in the city, a lot of trash. We still have graffiti, and this actually goes on and on with a lot of things that are not... the city's not going good. Okay? The reason I'm running is for two main reasons. One, to speed the economic growth of the city in order to create more high-paying jobs for our citizens, and two, increase the...
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Starr.
My name is Eric Starr. I'm a lifelong resident in Turrick County. I really believe that we have a lot of potential in the city. I really believe we have a lot of potential in the city, and unfortunately, we're not taking advantage of it. And probably the best indicator of that is a chart that you'll find. At every table is a couple of charts there. It shows the unemployment rate of our city versus the other large cities in this county. And what you'll find today is that we have a 6.3% unemployment rate in Oxnard, and the best city, North Park, has a 4.5%. It's an extra 1.8 percentage difference. This is the Canary and the Pole Mine. This is what shows you what is wrong here. I want to focus on the basics. I want to focus on law enforcement, infrastructure, and creating a business-friendly environment. How can I get things done? You seem to get an issue on ballots. I can take that sort of enthusiasm and work at the tips of that, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Villa.
Yes, my name is Jack Villa. I'm running for city council. I've been born and raised in Oxnard. I'm third generation, son of Oxnard. My family here has been here since 1916, and I'm running because I'd like to see a positive change of engagement with the neighborhoods, the business. Right now, I'm the vice chair to the INCO. I work with the neighborhoods, trying to get them involved, and the main thing I believe the city needs to do is to get the residents and the business involved and engagement and speaking to each other. And I think I can bring that about, and I presently am doing that with the neighborhoods, bringing neighborhoods into the fold of the city. And I think I can get a positive change. Thanks.
Thank you. That's our opening statement. We have a series of five questions. I'm going to start with the first line at the end with Mr. Albaizy, and then second one, we'll start with Mr. Chavez and on down the line. So the first question, starting with Mr. Albaizy. What is the most urgent issue the Oxnard City Council must address if elected? How would you address it? What's the urgent issue?
I think there's several urgent issues, but in my opinion, the most urgent issue is to really deal with the crime and set up systems and work with our community chiefs in order to set things up, in order to increase that, to be able to make the citizens of the city feel more secure, increase the profitability of our businesses, and really drive new businesses to really come to the city. With the experience that I bring to the table, dealing with so many local businesses myself and outside, I really feel that I know what local businesses need, want, and how I can really drive revenue in order to also help the city drive more revenue and really make it a productive situation where we're not spending money, we're actually making money at the end of the day in order to pay for more of these things that we need. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Chavez. What is the most urgent issue the Oxnard City Council must address if elected? How would you address it?
Well, like Mr. Albaizy, I believe that there is multiple issues that our city has to deal with. I believe the most urgent one, because there's about five of them that I can think off the top of my head, but the most urgent one that I believe that we need to tackle right away is our fiscal house. We need to get our fiscal house under control so that we know where we stand as a city. And to do that is to try to recruit and try to retain our finance department. You know, we've lost our CFO. We resigned. Our finance department is not in the best shape, so our goal should be try to reach out, retain employees, have competitive wages so that we keep our finance department, so that we know where we stand financially. I believe once we stand, know where we stand financially, we'll be able to work on the other issues that we have, but I believe the main one is our fiscal house.
Thank you. Mr. Dozier. What is the most urgent issue the Oxnard City Council must address if elected?
Thank you for the question. Like most of you in here, we probably are very modest, period. So safety is always going to be on everyone's mind as being the most important thing. I think we addressed that right up front. I'm a very good police chief, someone that can trust the local community, that I genuinely believe. What I would like to see, though, as a city council member, is the main thing I want to focus on are the material, over 100 material weaknesses that were identified. Now that we have them identified, the next step is to help and get well... we need to set a plan and split it against a tournament so we can address these material weaknesses. And we should also set a schedule and say, one year from now, and see how long we're doing. If elected, those are the things that I'll be focusing on.
Thank you. Moving down the line, Mr. Huber. What is the most urgent issue the Oxnard City Council must address if elected?
Too many issues, too little time. But my number one issue is the budget. We need to get our financial house in order first so that we can have a vibrant, safe city and do extremely well in the region, be the best city in the region. We need to make sure that we hire a good city financial officer that doesn't make a position. We need to make sure we hire the staff that can make sure they maintain the books. We need to hire, or actually we need to buy software that is modern. We still have old software for our current financial system. We need to zero base our budget. Our department heads need to have a starved press slate and build their budget up from requirements so that they understand what their budget is. We also need to reduce our number of consultants that we have so we have a fair balance between number of employees and the number of consultants. It should be something like 30 or 20% of consultants and 80% of the residents or the employees that are working the budget. And the final thing is we need an independent auditor controller that can make sure that we maintain our ethical standards. Thank you.
Mr. McDonald. What is the most urgent issue the Oxnard City Council must address if elected?
I think the first thing we need to look at is really our public safety position. Our police department is understaffed. Crime has gone through the roof in the last four or five years. We are now above the median average nationwide in terms of crime rates. We need to have a city that is safe, clean, prosperous, and effective, and people will want to come here, they'll want to live here, they'll want to start their businesses here. And if we create that environment, that helps us on the financial side. City of Ventura, 108,000 people, has six fully staffed fire stations. City of Oxnard, 210,000 people, has eight fire stations, most of which are fully staffed, but periodically there's a downgrade in staffing. I think that we are not positioned to be self-sufficient, pay for a huge disaster or emergency or anything else if we need that. That creates a clean, prosperous environment because we bring businesses here, and those businesses are going to help decrease our tax base, our property tax base, and get us on financial sound footing.
Thank you. Mr. Patriz. Got the mic? There we go. What is the most urgent issue the Oxnard City Council must address if elected?
I feel like there are two main issues facing the city right now. Number one is the economic role in order to create hundreds of good paying jobs. I believe that the council should submit to the city manager for execution a plan that will create hundreds of jobs. If the city manager doesn't execute the will of the people, we should just terminate that manager and get another. I would be very, very, believe me, I would fire the city manager if I was to improve economic growth. The second one is the crime rate. The crime rate, we keep giving the police department in safety millions of dollars every year, and they don't do nothing. The crime is still going up. What I would... I will put the police chief under it that if either you either produce that crime rate or we're going to fire you, or we're going to take away monitoring your budget. You either produce, I want results, no results, we're out.
Thank you. Mr. Starr. What is the most urgent issue the Oxnard City Council must address if elected? How would you address it?
Think about your business. If you have more revenues and a better control of your costs, you'd be better off. The city needs to focus on generating more revenues by making it easier for businesses to come. Right now, it's very difficult without a permanent process. We've been waiting for months. That's never proven to be true. That's just ridiculous. So I think it's all about bringing permits implicitly into Oxnard. There's a model for right now in Phoenix. They have managed to improve the permit process so that literally someone could come in and get a permit a day, a day and a half. I think it really improves city's finances. We also have the highest city business license in the county. I'll work to reduce that to the lowest, and I'll put an inch of it off to do so, and that's what it takes.
Thank you. Mr. Villa. What is the most urgent issue the Oxnard City Council must address if elected?
I believe fiscal responsibility is probably the number one to be addressed. I believe it needs to strengthen its reserves to afford better policing in the city. When I speak to neighborhoods across the city, the one concern residents have is their safety. They want to feel safe in their home. They want to feel safe when they leave to work, when they come back from work that their home is not broken into. They want to feel safe when they walk their dog down the street or when their kids play in the park. They want to feel safe when they walk their children to school. But fiscal responsibility and healthy reserves to afford that is the most important, and also, I believe, there should be a... the council brought up the whistleblowers issue, and I think that that should be addressed too.
So that was our first question. Thank you very much. We're going to start back at the end with Mr. Chavez. Put the mic over there. Thank you, everyone. So what are your views on the need for residential and commercial development at Channel Islands
You know, I believe that our first step in order to try to deal with the development is creating better relationships. Like a few of the candidates up here have said, that the process for businesses to get licensing of the permit is not the best. It's in horrible shape that we are expecting businesses to pay two to three times more than the average in the county. So for development, you know, development brings jobs. It brings jobs for construction. It brings permanent jobs that are year-round. It allows residents to tackle our housing issue where we need housing for our residents. We're overcrowding our certain areas, and I think a new development on the Channel Islands Harbor will be vibrant. It'll support our city, it'll bring in more revenue, and you know, I don't really see too much of a downfall with trying to develop an area like that.
Mr. Dozier. What are your views on the need for residential and commercial development at Channel Islands Harbor?
I'm happy that the city finally got the Channel Islands back from the county, and I think that one of the things we need to do, though, is make sure that the county gets a piece of cost for its maritime fleet. Right now, we have communities within Oxnard that are picking up the whole cost for the whole county map that's spared. What I would like to see is our peers to... our harbor to become a traffic destination. I would like to see tourism driven there, less support the businesses that are there and try to attract new businesses to come there. Also, I'd like to see Oxnard have its own pier. We simply the only city that doesn't have a pier. I think that that would also attract a lot of businesses. So I would like to see that.
Thank you. Mr. Huber. What are your views on the need for residential and commercial development at Channel Islands Harbor?
The Channel Islands Harbor is an absolute gem that needs to be polished and made better. An opportunity to have both used resident and commercial development is a wonderful idea. When I was at the base, I was able to establish a number of relationships with developers that are in the area so that we could come up with the right balance of what the residents need, what the businesses need, and what the city needs. As a planning commissioner, I'm also learning those things and how to build those relationships and some innovative ideas for how to have a win-win-win situation for residents, businesses, and the city. Of course, this is in the Channel Islands Harbor's in the county, but the land and the roads, as people go to that, are in the city, so we're going to have an impact with our traffic. We're going to need to make sure that we have a good conversation with developers so that we get benefit in the city from that development. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McDonald. What are your views, please, on the need for residential and commercial development at Channel Islands Harbor?
Oh, absolutely needed. Channel Islands Harbor is pulled, it's tired, it's going out. It needs to be improved. It is in the city. It's owned by the county of Ventura, but the city now, because of the postal commission decision, has the opportunity to be involved in that process or prior to that, it was simply a county decision. I think we need to bring a plan forward where we can build collaboration among the residents that are down there. You hear a lot of concerns from the people that live there. We need them to be part of the solution as opposed to not being happy with what we're proposing or what the county is proposing. We really need strong collaborative support to improve that area in terms of housing, businesses. Again, a strong business community makes a strong local community in terms of bringing revenue to our city and helping us build to the future.
Thank you. Mr. Patriz. What are your views on the need for residential and commercial development?
I am 100% for it. I have always said that I believe in economic growth. A city cannot be static and stay in one place. Even if we don't want growth, it's going to be inevitable. We've got a plan for it. I am 100% in support of commercial activities in that area to create more jobs, more income for the city, and generate all those things that we could use them for support of the services of the city. I go a step further that I would like to create partnerships, private and government partnerships, to entice businesses to come to the city, and I am all for that. And if I get elected, I'm going to work very hard to create a lot of good paying jobs at City of Oxnard, probably about 100 good paying jobs every year in my four years that I'm elected. And I have a plan for it, and I will talk about that plan later on. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Starr. Your views, Channel Islands Harbor?
It's really a symptom of government ownership and management anything. It's a really poor situation for the last 15 years. As long as the county owns this property, it's going to be dismanaged. My view, what needs to happen is do as much as we can to get the private schools to be able to own and control Channel Islands Harbor. One possible way to do that is that we can solicit biz out there for a developer to come in and develop the harbor. If necessary, this is controversial for me to say this, but if necessary, the city could use eminent men to take the property from the county and at the same time execute a very limited developer finance that and to go out and actually develop this property to what it needs to be. This is a gem with great potential. As long as the government controls it, we'll never be what we think it will be.
Thank you. Mr. Villa. Your views, please, of the residential and commercial development?
Yes, I'm all for the development of the harbor. At one time, we had Casa Suri and Loxer Trap, and that area was a vibrant area 30 years ago. I've lived here all my life, and that used to be the place to go for dining and entertainment hotel. That was the place. And I think if you come back, and I believe it would be an asset for tourism and the development of the city as a whole, and bringing revenue and hotel tax and so on. So I'm all for the development of the harbor.
Thank you. We haven't forgotten about you, Mr. Albaizy. What are your views?
I know we all love the new collection, especially the comedy club, right? Imagine that at the Channel Islands Harbor. How much better would it have not been if it was to have been put there? That's what would have driven tourism. That's what had driven more businesses to the city. In my opinion, what needs to happen right now is that no amendment needs to happen. I think leaders, strong leaders, need to bring one vision together, unite the homeowners, unite the county and the city in order to execute a plan, and we do need to work with developers. We do need to work with them within ourselves and see exactly what we need to bring a vision and have everybody share the exact same vision in order to execute that.
Thank you. We're going to move on to our third question. Mr. Dozier, we'll start with you on this one. Skipping over there, sorry about that. Mr. Dozier. How can city council help the Oxnard Police Department lessen the crime rate, particularly on the side from the Oxnard point?
I think the city has took the first step in filling the most important provision in the police department with a chief. I think it's a good step. A model that I like to point out to the city is the model that was used at River Park and the River Park Resort. What makes River Park unique is that the community, through the development, paid for two police staffs, two police officers, and a sex station to reside in the community. I think that that has greatly reduced crime within our community because we have presence that's frequent, police presence that's frequent in all of the city. The police are well-known throughout the community. Residents feel comfortable identifying any issues. I think that knowledge should be used going forward to any new developments in the city, and that would definitely be a good incentive.
Thank you. Mr. Huber. How can city council help the Oxnard Police Department lessen the crime rate, particularly on the side?
Great question. Thank you. What we need to do today to lessen crime is make sure that the police department has the people and equipment that they need. What we need to do in the future is have some transformation and innovative ideas. What I mean by that is that you can do predictive analysis of where the crimes are going to happen, and make sure that there's a police officer there and a fore it happens. Lots of ideas about that. You can think about it on payday. If you have a police officer at an ATM, there's less crime. Other things that we need to think about are jobs. We need to have jobs for those folks that are committing crimes. We need to have an education system that goes into and teaches the students what they need to do to get into those jobs. We also need some youth programs so that we have something for those young folks to do after school and on the weekends so that they're not leading their lives towards crime. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McDonald. How can the city council help the Oxnard Police Department lessen the crime rate?
City council needs to understand that this last budget cycle, we took over 15, between 15 and 25 positions away from the police department. Depends on who you talk to about the number count. We took over a million dollars out of their budget. It's been said that our city spends more general fund money on police department than they have in the city of the county. Well, we're the biggest city in the county, of course. That makes sense. When you look at it on a per capita basis, Oxnard is near the bottom of the list of the amount of money per person that spends on public safety. We're almost last out of all the communities here. We need to focus on public safety. We need to give them back to being able to do community-oriented policing, be in touch with our community, talk to neighborhoods. It's hard to do that when they're running call to call to call. It is not unusual for them to be 20... And it's not unusual for there to be twenty-five calls pending. I noticed I called in and they say you're twenty-fifth on the list. I hope and forget and I'll figure it out another way. We need to focus on that and be in communication with our city and reinvigorate community-oriented policing.
Thank you. Mr. Patrice, how can the Oxnard Police Department lessen crime rate?
I believe that the biggest motivator is the S Q R to put the police department because they are supposedly the experts in fighting crime. I would have the city council ask the police chief to bring to us a plan how you're going to go about reducing the crime rate. We're going to give the police chief one year to reduce the crime rate. If at that year, the crime rate has nothing to do with it, we're going to cut your budget. We're going to cut it further, and you're going to have to do more with less. We're going to cut it to one-third, and if that doesn't work, we're going to give you another year. And if that doesn't work, we're going to fire the police chief and replace him with another one that is more comfortable. Apparently, if the crime rate is not going down, he's not executing.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Starr, how can the Oxnard Police Department lessen crime rate?
We have to realize that we can't leave what's called an old service of city. Our city tries to do so many things that it does not feel this was a basis, such as law enforcement. We need to make sure that the police department has the resources and need to make sure that they are not distracted by the ordinances that we have. Tuesday night, it looks like we just had a first radio on you anti-stalking. But is that really the most important thing here? I don't think so. I think we need to focus on these basins. I think we need to deep up neighborhood watch programs. There's a lot that ordinary citizens can do, reduce crime rate in their neighborhoods. So, basically, focus, divert resources to the police department, bolster neighborhood watch programs. That's how we solve this sort of problem.
Thank you. Mr. Villa, city council, how can the Oxnard Police Department lessen crime rate?
Yes, first of all, I believe the city police should be properly staffed. And with that, I believe there should be monies for the youth, mentorships, apprenticeships for between thirteen and twenty-four. I worked with youth for thirty years, and I've never met a bad kid with just bad decisions. And we, as a city, have got to keep kids and young adults from making those bad decisions with mentorships and apprenticeships and keep them, give them options for their choices. Also, we have to work with the neighborhood councils, try to get them to get a neighborhood watch like Mr. Starr's. I believe that'll help with these.
Thank you. Mr. Albinaz, how can the Oxnard Police Department lessen crime rate?
First of all, this points me that really only one person up here touched upon the real issues. And it disappoints me that we don't have anybody really, on the inside is what I'm going to call it, that really understands the real issues that have to do with a lot of safety in the community. I do believe the police department needs more resources. They need more equipment. They need more personnel. At the same time, I don't think all of the equipment in the world or personnel in the world will make the difference unless we attack the real issues, which is usually at a young age at home. There's a young guy in the community that attacks the issue that is the nail on the head, which is attacking and helping parents understand kids, having more communication, and vice versa. I think the main issue usually lies at the home at a young age. And yes, we support our police department with whatever they may need, but if we don't attack these issues at a young age, we're not going to get anywhere. And it seems to me that nobody understands that really in the community or in the city council or on the inside. So, if we tack that, we help our police to give them everything they need. How do you feel if you go into a nightclub or a bar or a restaurant, there's five police officers outside?
Mr. Chavez, how can the city council help the Oxnard Police Department?
You know, there's many ways for us to be able to help our Oxnard Police Department. And a lot of them were already spoken on, you know, swapping out old equipment for new equipment, hiring additional personnel, sworn officers, as well as supportive staff. But, you know, in the largest city with over two-hundred-and-twenty thousand residents, we are in the top twenty largest cities in California with the largest young population in the county, mind you. We need more when it comes to recreations. And that's where we need to take steps as leaders on council to build relationships with local businesses, new businesses, nonprofit organizations, and community leaders to be able to bridge a gap because the old saying, "It takes a village," and it really means it takes a village. We need to all come together to build, bridge a partnership so that we're able to help our youth, our residents, and our businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. That runs through question three. We're moving to question four. We're going to start with Mr. Huber. Sliding the mic down. So, Mr. Huber, what is your plan to assist the city of Oxnard to be more business-friendly, such as streamlining the permitting process?
Thank you very much. As a small business owner, I know exactly what it takes to start a business in Oxnard. I've been walking around and talking to business owners, and I've actually been told that Oxnard is anti-business. Some of the reasons we're anti-business is because we do have a terrible permitting process. I don't think that you can throw a concierge in there and solve a problem. That's more red tape. What you need to do is streamline through continuous process improvement or some other type of business savvy approach to make sure that permitting process is much easier. Another thing is that when a business applies for permit or to open a business, the conditions that they have to be assigned are just amazing. Hundred-and-twenty, hundred-and-seventy conditions just for a small business to open. Some of them can't open for six months, losing six months' worth of revenue because there's so many conditions needed there. Streamline the conditions, streamline the permits, and be much more friendly to our businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McDonald, what are your plans to assist the city of Oxnard to be more business-friendly, such as streamlining the permitting process?
I think the way we approach it right now is not working for us. And we won't go ahead and submit for a business plan or a business permit. It goes to one table, comes back, goes to another, comes back. Yesterday, I was able to sit in on a meeting and I facilitated with a new business that wants to come to Oxnard. And instead of going through the normal process, we brought all the city stakeholders to the table at the same time and had a roundtable discussion with the applicant right there and cut to the chase of bringing them into our city. We told them upfront what they were going to be expected to do. We asked them the added questions of us. And I don't think we're doing that on a regular basis, and that's what we need to do. We need to encourage businesses that, you know, you need to look at us as your friend. And right now, we're not being very friendly. And I think we need to work with other regulatory agencies throughout the county and throughout the state to help them be more business-friendly also. I think they've lost sight of the fact that a successful business is a successful community, and we're not doing that.
Thank you. Mr. Patrice, how can the city be more business-friendly?
I believe that the city of Oxnard should either, one, establish a fact-finding committee of business people and regular citizens to study how to make it more effective and more efficient, how to make it more enticing for businesses to come and establish their businesses here in Oxnard. We are able to use the Intera County Economic Agency in order to work very closely with them in order to come up with ideas and how to entice businesses. My main goal is to really create good paying jobs for the City of Oxnard. And that's going to be, that's going to be a twenty-four-hour thing with me, Brian, elected. We're going to create good paying jobs. I have a plan. I have to create more than a hundred, a hundred jobs every year for a point in time.
Thank you. Mr. Starr, business friendly?
Permit, simple as that. Pioneer Phoenix, it's now being used in Rancho Cudova, Elksborough, Hill or what is it? The city decided to enlist architects, civil engineers, gave them the power to certify if their building plan is what complies with their building codes. The applicant takes those type of plans in to the city, gets the permit, that, done. No more months and months and months waiting for city bureaucracy. It's just basically outsourced the permitting process. If all the government handles, it'd be impossible for businesses to do ten improvements really quickly. We can do that here, outsourced the permitting process, and you will find the process much easier in the city to not run this.
Thank you. Mr. Villa, what are your plans to assist in becoming a more business-friendly city?
Yes, the permit process has got to be streamlined and it's got to be business-friendly. And I believe that if we place items in the planning to make it business-friendly, you know, I'm all for, like most candidates have already said, whatever it takes to get a business started and make it easy for them to come to Oxnard.
Thank you. Mr. Albinaz, business friendly?
I'll start with a quick example of two local businesses, and keep this in mind. It's simply an ice cream shop. They're simply ice cream shops. They couldn't get the doors open for eighteen months. One just opened recently, and the other one is still struggling through the hoops that these other gentlemen are talking about with permitting. It's an ice cream shop. I think the mayor has implemented the one-stop shop, which is a step in the right direction. And at this moment, I don't know exactly if outsourcing is the right situation or if we just need to get into our department and really hunker down and really see what exactly is issued here? How can we make it more efficient inside the city and try to help it progress? Because small local businesses don't have huge funding and reach back. Eighteen months can kill them, and they can close their doors before they even open.
Thank you. Mr. Chavez, a business-friendly city?
You know, many people I was working with, I've always told them that the city council at one point did have a great idea, created a civic center that people one-stop shop. The problem was that there was nobody there to oversee it, to manage it, which means that it fell through the cracks like many other departments or projects that the city council has ventured into. The thing that I would like to see is actually make it a one-stop shop, have a business service manager that would oversee all businesses' relationships, break up the city into districts so that you have your own personal district business coordinator that you get to talk to one-on-one with to provide the support that you need to ensure that your business succeeds. You know, the processing for the permits, you know, the last time that I heard it took seven months or more. And again, we're paying, we're asking businesses, new businesses, to pay two to three times more than anybody else. I believe business's time is very important, and the city needs to start treating it as such.
Thank you. Mr. Dozier, what are your plans to assist the city becoming more business-friendly?
Like most have already said, streamline, streamlining the processes a must. But I think the biggest thing we can do is we have to work on changing the perception that it's hard to do business in Oxnard. And I think we can do that through a series of city and chamber-sponsored business expos. And at these expos, we can, businesses that want to come to our city can meet businesses that are currently here through the Chamber of Commerce. They can meet local organizations like the Downtowners that they want to set up downtown and see how things are done there. And they can, those two groups can help these new businesses navigate the hard process that currently exists at City Hall.
Thank you. That ends that question cycle. We are in the fifth and last question before we get to the closing statements. Shifting gears a bit, we're going to start with Mr. McDonald. The question is, do you support adding lifeguards to Oxnard's beaches, and how would you pay for it yourself?
I do support bringing lifeguards to Oxnard beaches. We are the last stretch of coastal access area in the county of Ventura that does not have some form of lifeguard protection. It can be expensive. Do we need to build a whole program to begin? No, I think we need to approach it incrementally. I think we need to look at ways of staffing. Perhaps this is something where we look to the county. And instead of having the workforce internally, we'll see if there's a way to partner with the county and get a way of doing that that's more cost-effective. In terms of support, it's going to be a general fund asset that we pay for on the general fund. How do you get that money? You encourage people to come live here. You encourage people to come open their business here. You encourage people to work here. If you have a workforce that is well-paid and doing well, they spend their money locally, that increases your general fund. That gives us the ability to pay for that type of program, but we have to be moderately budgetary.
Mr. Patrice, do you support adding lifeguards to Oxnard beaches?
I support adding lifeguards, but I would not have the city pay for it. I would try to look for public charities, private charities who will be willing to pay the bill. And if that doesn't work, I will go ahead and take it out of the police department budget.
Thank you. Mr. Starr, lifeguards in Oxnard beaches and how to pay for it?
I'm not sure what the question is. I think you have to look at the number of lives saved, expended here versus elsewhere. My general sense is that we're probably going to save more lives if we figure out how to get them through the campaign. And focusing on that, focusing on the general police services, maybe in better resources. I can be convinced otherwise, but someone can show me the statistics that says for every thirty thousand dollars, one thousand dollars, they save so many lives. I'm open to looking at that. But my general answer is deep up the police that we have today that we've lost so that we can get better services there. Let's get the best bank route out there first before we start looking at low-yielding proposals and stuff like this.
Thank you. Mr. Villa, do you support adding lifeguards to beaches and how would you pay for it yourself?
Yes, I support lifeguards at the beach. I believe we have to be physically responsible and healthy reserves in order to pay for it. But in the meantime, I believe we should have a partnership with the county in the meantime. But we should have been physically responsible and healthy reserves to pay for it. But I'd like to see that.
Thank you. Mr. Albinaz?
So, if I go with my family to the beach, I'm the best woman in the world. There's still things we can't control of other nature. So, obviously, we do need lifeguards on our beaches. I think there's several ways, and this is just one thing that I just thought about right now when we're sitting up here. Why can't we have large companies, a beach gear, beach equipment, things like that sponsor the lifeguard? Or put money into a fund for these lifeguards. In return, they can do some advertising or they can do some different things of sort in order to pay for the lifeguards. And that's just one suggestion or idea that we can use in order to execute that and really keep our beaches secure because I have a good swimming. But I've been caught a little bit of a riptide before, and it was tough for me to get out of there. So, I would definitely want a lifeguard in there in order to get me out of there. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Mr. Chavez, do you support the lifeguards and how would you pay for it?
I support it. As far as spending, I think I can only dot it that I can. But I believe, you know, the Intera County Community College District offers classes for police and firefighter. I would love to see a partnership with the VCCD that will allow those students that take police courses or take firefighter courses to kind of do like a summer intern program that provides our lifeguards on our beaches. Of course, funding will have to come from the general budget or potentially look at the fire department because this will be a group that will work with our firefighters. And I guess I have to learn how to swim if we don't get lifeguards right.
Thank you. Mr. Dozier, the lifeguard question, support it? How would you pay for it?
Yes, I do support it. I go, my wife and I, we have a son, and him and his friends, they really love going to the beach and riding boogie boards. And as a parent, I'm always concerned that there's a lifeguard on either way they're out there doing that. They have to take care of themselves. So, I definitely think we need lifeguards. I would like to see maybe half of the positions paid for through the city. And the other half, I would look to the, we have so many students, high school, colleges, so I would look to try to sponsor some type of summer program to span the others.
Thank you. Mr. Huber, supporting lifeguards and how would you pay for it?
Thank you. Oxnard is a tourist destination. We have beautiful beaches. And when I take my wife down on a date to the street beach, we see a lot of people in the water swimming, and they're lifeguards. We really do need to have lifeguards. But before we talk about lifeguards, we really do need to make sure our physical house is in order and we can figure out how to pay for those. And once we figure that out, the first thing we need to do is
And once we figure that out, the first thing we need to do is hire marine safety officers that'll coordinate those lifeguards. We do have lifeguards in Wyoming, we have lifeguards in Ventura. So we need to take an innovative solution or innovative approach and take a look at how will we use lifeguards and how will we hire them? We can use state, counties, maybe contract out whoever's the most efficient organization who we should hire for those lifeguards. Thank you.
Thank you. That runs through a series of five questions. We're going to do one minute each in closing statement. Switching things up, I'm going to start at this end of the table and work our way down in the opposite of the alphabetical we started. So Mr. Villa, we'll start with you, one minute, your closing statement, please.
Yes, thank you for having us here. Thirty-eight years, most of my adult life, I've been involved with the community or youth or workplace and I volunteered, I stepped up to the plate. Now, with my leadership experience, I believe I can take another step and lead the city into the right direction. I believe that being retired with thirty-five years of the postal service, I'm going to spend a hundred percent of my time as city council. The other candidates have full-time jobs, I am retired. I'm going to give you a hundred percent of my time, twenty-four hours, and I'll be engaged with the public like I have been with the INCO and with the businesses. And that's what the city needs is a new positive change of engagement with businesses and the residents.
Thank you. Mr. Starr, closing statement.
Mayor McThellin, a debate is going to be in the city council. And what you're going to find is that all the candidates here are making various promises which you really don't know how they're going to perform. In some cases, if they've already been there, you know how to perform. But for the most part, you don't know what they're going to do. In my case, you know I'm going to get things done, so to speak. You seem to go out there defending people, going out and getting initiative on the ballot, that's what it takes. And in the face of a lawsuit, that's it, just talk. You know I'm going to be your champion. You know that I'm a pro business. You know I'm going to focus on the basics and law enforcement, infrastructure, creating a business-friendly environment that makes it possible for all of you to do business here, to expand your businesses here, to bring more businesses into town. And that is going to bring success to the city. I can help be your overall champion.
Thank you. Closing statement, please, Mr. Patrice.
Yes, I would like to just say that if you really want change, if you really want a dynamic member of the city council who is not going to be afraid to make decisions and be afraid of what's going to happen to his reelection, I personally do not care if I get reelected. But let me tell you something, if you give me a chance to serve four years in the city council, you're going to see a dynamic economic, economic system in the city of Oxnard, you're going to see changes right away. We're not going to wait two years, we're not going to wait one year. We're going to, we're going to start, we're going to walk and start doing things that need to be done. And I'm going to make decisions that are going to hurt, but it's going to be for the benefit of everybody. To each, one is economic development. I have a plan to create hundreds of good paying jobs. Secondly, is crime. I am really sick and tired of the city of Oxnard throwing money at the police department and the police department turning around and not doing anything. If they're not doing their job, I will put, I will run the city manager.
Thank you. Mr. McDonald, I'm sure you're ready for a reminder, your closing statement, please.
I want to thank you for being here this morning. I know all of you in our busy lives and I appreciate you taking time out of your day to come listen to us. That's very, very important to me. We on city council are here to serve what you need. That's our job, that's why we get elected. Being a city council member is not just seven or eight hours on a Tuesday night meeting and I will be the first one to tell you, we can be more focused, we can be more efficient, we can get businesses done at a time and matter. We're just having a little trouble there right now, a little challenge, but that will come in time. I spend probably thirty hours a week doing council work, if not more. I'm completely focused on this job and making this city a better place to live, work and recreate. I want people to be happy here, I want them to feel safe here. I'm blessed that you've given me two terms as a councilman. I'm hoping that you will give me one more or at least one more if I choose to go beyond there. I have left my campaign material on your tabletop, it fully outlines what I intend to do. And if you need a beautifully anointed yard sign to compliment the color of your house, you can go outside the door.
Thank you. Mr. Huber, your closing statement, please.
Thank you. When I was a big shipment at the Naval Academy, I was able to walk through the Sevresna stores with a Latin inscription above it that said, "No city said Oxnard." That means not for self, but for country. We knew that we were getting into something greater than ourselves. I see the same thing here as this councilman for Oxnard. I'm getting into something greater than myself. This is not about me. I have no personal agenda. My agenda is what is good for the city. My motto is, "No city said Oxnard, not for self, but for Oxnard." Oxnard can be a great, well-run city and I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and get to work. So hopefully you'll vote for me. I'd be honored for your vote. I'm number five on the ballot. It's a long ballot. I'd also like to thank the chamber for having this forum and I'd like to thank all of you for being educated voters and coming out. Please continue to do your research, check their websites. In fact, you have a card on your table that has my website on it, has more information about me. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Dodger, your closing statement.
Thank you again. Thank everyone for inviting us and giving us this opportunity to speak to you, short amount of time that we have. If you wanted to find out more about me, you can go to OrlandoforOxnard.com. I am a lifelong public servant at some point in, you know, some point, various points in my life, from being in the military to now working as a federal employee. I've always worked to better any community that I've lived in. I've been a budget analyst that's been responsible for hundreds of millions of dollars and currently a program analyst. And I've bring to life projects that engineers oversee and make sure that they come in on time. On schedule, low-cost. I offer my skills to the city and I hope that you consider me this number for your vote on the floor of the ballot.
Thank you. Mr. Chavez, closing statement.
First and foremost, I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for food share, for the sponsorship. Thank you for Nancy in the cards in the back. You know, many of you, this may be the first time that you're seeing me and it's no surprise. The whole entire time, a lot of people ask me, what is your experience going into this? And I don't hide around the bush, I'm honest about it. I don't have experience. So I have been taken since February of this year, attending every city council meeting, attending every single mission meeting that I'm possibly able to get to, meeting with nonprofits, meeting with community leaders, so that I can learn what it takes to be part of this city, what it takes to serve on the city council. So that when I do, when I am fortunate enough to be on the dais, that I'm not learning the job, I would already know the job. So I don't know what number I am on the ballot, so welcome me.
Thank you. Final closing statement, Mr. Albiniz, please.
So I'm going to keep it really simple. I understand local business. I've owned, I've operated, I've opened, I've sold several in the city of Oxnard and elsewhere. I've assisted many local business owners in the community to also open their doors and move their business forward in an upward direction where they're actually building revenue. And I feel that's what I really can do with the city of Oxnard. I have a good initiatives on the ballot that truly weren't the best thing possibly for the city. And I don't have the past two terms with experience with the city and haven't been able to unite the city council or the community. But what I can tell you is I don't have a plan, I have a vision. And I have something, Mike Tyson once said, "Everybody, anybody can come in the ring with me with the perfect plan." As soon as I knock them upside the head and they fall on the floor, that plan goes off the window and goes that way and they fall on the floor and I win the fight. On the contrary, I'm like Floyd Mayweather, the first two or three rounds, he's trying to figure out his fighter, figures him out, takes him.
Ladies and gentlemen, round of applause. Thank you to all of you. I mentioned at the beginning and I thought this activity would enrich us all. I believe that's been true. I feel that it's an honor to be up here with you. Thank you all very much. I will throw it over to you.
Thank you very much, Urs. You really peppered the type to all of this and I appreciate that. We moved on actually a little quicker than we did today and also that's great. I'd like to thank the chair again for sponsoring. I'd like to thank all the candidates for dedicating some time this morning with us. And just a couple of quick announcements. Y'all have a little pile that you see here. Just want to bring this to your attention. It's our 2017 Leadership Program. And we have two of our 2016 leadership participants here, Greg. Huh? Hannah, get down. We also have a lot of people in attendance here today who helped put on the monthly programs that they go through. So if you are interested or you have someone in your company who would benefit the exposure to know more about the city, we'd love to have them join us. If you would contact me, check our website, but we are looking forward to a new group next year as well. So just.